To the order of the Gladstone City Commission Regular Meeting of September 27, 2021. The invocation will be by myself. Loving Heavenly Father, we come to you this hour asking for your blessing and help as we are gathered together. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us the desire to find ways to excel in our work. Help us to work together and encourage each other to excellence. We ask that we would challenge each other to reach higher and farther to be the best that we can be. We ask this in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Ledgers to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pokola?
Here.
Here.
Isn't he excused?
He's excused.
Commissioner Akalov?
Here.
Commissioner Stuzinski?
Here.
Public comment? Would you like to comment publicly, step up to the podium, and please state your name and your address? Keep it brief.
I'm sorry. My name is Phyllis Pokola. I live in Tronic, Michigan, which is Alger County, not very far from here. And I'm here tonight because we have a son that lives in Bayview Housing Complex. Right now, he is not there. He is at a hotel in Esconaba because his room is being renovated and because he, he's there because he's handicapped. He's in a wheelchair. And so, he needed equal housing, and so they put him up in a very nice place in Esconaba. So besides the point, I'm here because, as his mother, I am concerned about where he is living. There have been concerns in the past, but it really came to a head on the 10th of September, I don't know if you're all aware, that there, a fire alarm went off at Bayview. And residents got outside. And this brings me to another issue, keep it in the back of your mind. I've talked to people that have lived there seven years, at the most, people I interviewed. They have never had a fire drill there. Now, I've been in public education all my career, I am retired now, but there wasn't an assignment that I ever had that we didn't conduct fire drills. And so, there had never been no fire drills. There have been alarms that have gone off, I guess they consider that practice, I don't know. But what happened that day was, no one from the staff was on site. So there was no way they could shut the fire alarms off. And when the fire alarms are off, go off, the elevator automatically locks. And we had people up on the third floor that couldn't get down because of mobility issues. And they went to the window and waved to the police officer outside in the fire department. There were fire trucks out there, three of them. I mean, the fire call was answered rapidly, there's no issue there. But nobody went around checking to see if there was people in their apartments that couldn't get out, which to me is of a concern. Also, these people, because there was no staff on hand, they couldn't get to, into the office to shut the fire alarm off, so the building remained on lockdown. People were outside for an hour and a half. Now, that's not an issue so much when it's nice weather, because these people can go out and they do spend time outside. But there's one resident that was outside. And so, I have decided that I don't live far, and I appreciate Mayor Thompson, that invocation that you gave, because it says exactly what I'm feeling. I mean, I feel like I want to pursue this issue. There has been no apologies, there has been nothing said to the residents. I'm going to tell you right now, there's poor Morel at, at Fairview and at Bayview. And I have, in my company here tonight, a resident that has come out with me tonight. She is not going to speak, but I'm sure she'd answer, would want her to. And I'm telling you that in a spirit of cooperation, I'm not going to let this topic go. I'm, I'm standing here before you tonight to inform you, in case you didn't know, I have talked to Public Safety. They assured me that they have gone through the building and now have keys and the alarm passwords. The only reason that they were able to shut the alarm off when they, they could, was that somebody at Public Safety guessed the password. So, I mean, do not just take my word for it, I want you to do your own questioning. But we have, how many residents, Bambi?
Um, there's sixty apartments.
Sixty apartments, and some are doubles. So, it's a lot of people, a vulnerable population. Many of these people feel like they have no other resources as far as a home goes, and that they don't like to rattle the chain very much, they're afraid of retaliation. And they don't always get straight answers. They have been sworn at when they bring up issues.
You said when the fire alarm goes off, the elevator locks up?
Yes. Yeah, there's, there's big issues. I mean, I understand that, why the elevator would lock. People, I think they have to shut the electricity down as well.
Yeah, I think the elevators go, go to the first floor and open. They don't, they don't block yet, they release it, but you can't run them without a key. Normally, fire departments have keys to run elevators.
So this was the whole building fire alarm that was going off?
Yes.
Wasn't just the area smoke alarm?
No, it was the whole fire alarm.
Okay.
Because what happened, there was a resident that was cooking, and the food burnt, and he opened his window and he opened the door, so then the smoke went out in the hall and activated the smoke alarms. And that's an issue that could happen to any of us. I mean, I burnt food and, and my fire, smoke alarms, fire alarms go off, but that's not the issue, it's what happens when they do go off. And why haven't there been drills? And why weren't people, the apartments being checked to make sure no one was left in the building regardless of the source of the fire? So, thank you for listening to me and being able to bring this issue up, and just telling you, I'm, as a mom, I'm not letting it go.
Thanks for bringing it forward, this is a public safety issue.
You did talk to Ron Robinson, or, at Public Safety in Gladstone?
I did talk to someone, I'm not sure who it was.
Okay.
But he did assure me he had gone back and walked the halls and got keys and the password and, but I don't know why it had to come to that, why this has been so neglected.
My name is Bambi Johnson, and as she said, I am a resident at Bayview. I guess the huge concern with what happened on the 10th was the fact that the maintenance person that was on call wasn't on the premises. And they, they regularly leave for the weekend, a lot of times when they're supposed to be on call. So if somebody does have a problem, we can't get a hold of them. The one time I lost my key and I needed to get into my apartment, well, the guy on call was north of Rapid River, didn't have phone reception, and I waited like an hour, between an hour and a half and two hours for him to get back with me. And he, you know, soon as he got back, I, I was in my apartment within five minutes, and I said, "All this, all that for this?" You know, and he wasn't happy about it, and like, I wasn't either, having to wait for so long. So I just think that who's ever on call needs to stay on the premises. That's just my opinion.
The director had his phone shut off that day, or they were trying to call him?
Yep. We tried calling both maintenance guys and the director, and he had his phone shut off and couldn't get a hold of the other guys, so nobody showed up. So luckily, somebody guessed the right code. Otherwise, it would have gone on for a lot longer, and it's very loud and very nerve-wracking.
Right.
Have you gone to the Housing Commission meetings that they have every month?
It's coming up.
I know, I talked to you on the phone about that today, so.
Okay, it's coming up.
Yeah, that would be, that'll take care of the loose ends on the, that building side. Public Safety is already, is already in motion to make sure that.
Right, okay. Thank you.
What I feel is the conflict of interest, the director of the Housing Commission is also a paid employee for the two units there, Bayview and Fairview. So how can you have a fair Housing Commission meeting and get the right answers?
Yeah, he, Housing Commissions are different. He, he answers to that board, but he has the name Director, like he's directing the board, but the board directs him. So, I guess, I don't know if that explains why, but if you go to the meeting, you'll, you'll see there's the head of the Housing Commission Board.
Right.
Runs meetings, and so.
Again, he's the one that's responsible for the, the, the unfair and safety of, of residents. Doesn't seem like, unless the board is strong enough, how can you convince the director?
They will.
They will.
They should, the board will direct him.
If they don't, they'll hear it.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the board is his boss. So, you know, at, at their direction, yeah, he has to follow that. It's not, it's not the other way around.
Yeah. Yeah, it's very similar to our setup, where it's the manager, the board, board directs. I can send you a link to the, to our co-approval, how, how that happens.
I think, I think this board has some oversight too of that commission, doesn't it? In, in the charter? Yeah, I'd have to read that again, but it's been a while.
I haven't read that in a long time, but there is some stuff in there.
Yeah, I think you do have something.
Their board is in charge of that. If I could ask a question, how many of you are aware of the incident?
Unless it makes the news, I mean, we don't, we don't hear about everything.
Well, I could have, Facebook.
Thank you.
I've hit and miss, hit and miss with Facebook. Thank you. Any other public comment? Do you have a date handy, when the, our Housing Commission meeting is? Do you have a date handy for that next Housing Commission meeting is?
I'll, I'll figure it out.
Okay.
Second, second.
Probably, I was gonna write my notes if somebody had it handy.
Second Tuesday of every month?
I could have, December 1st.
Oh, okay. I might be thinking my garbage day. Sorry.
Thank you.
I remember Tuesday, though.
First Tuesday? Any other public comment?
For those that don't know me, my name is Stephen View, 817 Delta Avenue. Amazing that the comments this lady made tonight. Only my situation parallels a lot of the concerns she has. I don't understand who, who's in charge of what and why people don't want to help people out. No communication. But I'll tell you something, today was one of the best days in eighteen months. Two of the commissioners stopped by my place. Thank you, thank you, thank you. That makes a heck of a difference, I was gonna use a different word, but it just made me feel like somebody cared. How many administrators have ever come and checked what's happening down Main Street for the uniqueness that, of needs that each business needs? I don't ask for anything for special privileges, I'm gonna tell you that now, but I don't expect other things to be taken away from me that I've been used to using for fifteen to twenty years, for no reason. I call it community on development, and you got all kinds of people that make sure it happens to a person individually. It's horrible, because that individual was me and continues to be me sometimes, plus I've talked to others in the same circumstance. I moved to Gladstone for one reason, the great school system. What I found along with that was a great city support. All of a sudden, you hire all kinds of new people, that support is gone. At least, in my book, it is. I found better value. I'm gonna concede to this battle of keeping my businesses here, it ain't worth it. You don't like my businesses, you don't support my businesses, you don't care about anything that my business does. People around here do. People from Rapid River, people from Esconaba. Well, and I know you can say you care, but talking and saying you care and not showing it is not the same. But you have, I, I met some people over the last couple of days, I know, what's my time? They said you have a clicker now.
Half a minute.
Half a, well, I want to thank Public Safety. They knew when they came over, I was wild. You have some very professional people there, and I was very grateful, they defused the situation, 'cause I didn't know what I would do. But I hired a crew of five people that day to come in and help me manipulate some of my property and stuff in my building, and I lost access. Nobody cared that I lost access, and nobody was around. You don't even have anyone you can call on the weekend, call Public Safety. They were useless as far as trying to enforce something. But they were great to be there and not try to say, I mean, actually, they tried to support my feelings, they understood it, so. Other than that, thank you Commissioners, thank you Public Safety, thank you Administrators that support free and fair and equitable treatment for everybody. And you know who you are.
Any other public comment?
Hi, my name is Doug Leisnering, I live at 1607 Lakeshore Drive in Gladstone. I'm mainly here for the DDA meeting, because I work at the ISD and, and part of that whole taxi agency thing, it's like an invite, so I'm here. But I also just want to thank the Commissioners, because I've been dealing with boards my whole professional life, and I know how challenging it is to be on a board, a city council, commission, wherever we call those terms. And typically, when people come to meetings, they're frustrated, and there's problems, you, you hear about a lot of problems, right? People always come to you, all the problems that are on. And, and I don't mean to throw shade at anybody else who spoke tonight, that's not the purpose of me coming up here, that's the last thing I would ever want, but to feel like I talked down to what they said. But I would just tell you that I moved back to Gladstone five years ago, I spoke to you two years ago about how happy I was to be a resident of Gladstone. In my five years of living back in Gladstone again, I've had interactions with your, your clerk, your treasurer, multiple people that work in the front office, Director of Public Safety, your police officers, we won't go into details, to multiple recreation directors, public works, I've dealt with a lot of people in Gladstone in five years, and I've yet to have a bad interaction. And I just wanted to let you know that. It's tough, because you guys sit in these chairs and you gotta hear about the problems, and there's legit problems that come to you, that's a hard part of your job. But I just wanted to let you know that I've had a great experience living in Gladstone, I'm really happy to be in Gladstone, I just let you hear that once in a while. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Move on to the consent agenda, the City, City Commission Regular Meeting Minutes of September 13th, the Planning Commission Regular Meeting Minutes of September 14th, the Parks and Recreation Regular Meeting Minutes of August 10th, and the City Payment of Bills.
If there's no question on the minutes, I can go over the bills real quick. One of the bills, if you see, says quotation on it, I don't know if anyone noticed that, but this is for the, the sewage pump out station at the harbor, and that will, it was not budgeted for, but Jason said the one that's there is close to twenty years old, and they're, they can't get parts for it anymore, and they, they were full this year, so they brought in extra money. And so, he got a quotation and wanted to order this, so he just wanted the quotation proved ahead of time because of COVID. You don't know if it's gonna be here in a week or a year, so he's ordering it.
I know, especially with mechanical stuff right now.
Yeah. There's been a lot of people that have problems with this pump out station, so it is, it needs to be replaced.
We haven't run into any issue, environmental issues with it, I mean, has it been working sort, not reliably? Okay.
I remember installing it, so it's that old.
That says a lot.
This one, the, the unit itself, it just says pump out unit on off switch, is that, that's the unit? Is the majority of the cost there, fifty-three forty or the fifty-six sixty-eight?
That's the whole pumping.
Is that the whole pumping unit then?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to, there's no model number there, you know?
It's a, it's a Little John pump out unit that all the harbors are a lot like other organizations, they check with each other, and this is the highest rated one.
One that works, okay. And who would be, where is this coming from? Ohio? Is that where it's coming from, where the quote was from?
Fremont, Fremont, Ohio.
We live in Michigan, and no one in Michigan makes a marine pump out?
That's the, they are the area rep for the Little John.
Oh, okay.
That's probably the territorial.
Territorial.
Okay.
Don't imagine, you know, with harbors and harbor sewage pump out stations is something that gets ordered every day, so imagine.
I just figured there's a lot, there's a lot of harbors in Michigan.
Yeah.
There may, there may be one, you know, a rep closer. But I'm, I'm sure they're all the same.
And you said that wasn't budgeted, but if I remember correctly, we had kind of a record year at the campground, so they probably made more than enough than, the revenue was, was over budget, I think, too, so probably more than make up.
They're.
This will be the harbor fund.
Yeah, they're having a really good year in the harbor, too.
In general, right.
One other thing about this pump out station also is, the pump out station's right next to the fuel depot, and a lot of people fuel and pump out at the same time, and they feel they've lost some fuel cells this summer because of people going over to Esconaba and using the, the better, the newer Little John pump out system, so. So there is a benefit, there's also that benefit that goes along with it, so.
So he has not ordered that yet, correct?
No.
Okay.
Did you need a separate motion for that then?
Yeah, I didn't catch the quotation part till I was going through my second reading in here, and then I, 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 I sent a text to Jason and I said, "So this is, this isn't a bill's quotation." He said, "Yeah, he just wants approval to order ahead of time because it wasn't budgeted," which is a good way to do it, so.
I would make that motion for five thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
I'll support. I have a motion by my, or a motion by Commissioner Akala, support by myself to buy the pump out station for the harbor. Any other discussion on the pump out station? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. And then we have the, the rest of the.
Pen and Dolan bill is for North 15th and Third Avenue. Is that the only bill we'll be getting, Barry?
Yes.
And if you look at the MDOT, the federal project, it's a bill for fifty-six thousand seven oh two. The local share for that project was a hundred and twenty-four. We budgeted a hundred and twenty-five thousand, so the hundred and twenty-four seven seventy-two, as you can see on the first page, so this will finish up our local share. And then, once we pay our local share, they'll, they'll pay off the rest of the project, so.
That's Fourth Street?
And this is for Fourth Street from last year. See, the last one is for the Delta County Road Commission. That is for the, for the stuff to put on Lakeshore Drive, Barry?
No, Delta County Road Commission, forty-two hundred thirty-one dollars, a renter roller. They're attached to the, the Bayview this year, the rest is just materials for the government.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
So that roller, the roller machine is part of the North 15th Street project, too?
Yeah, all the family.
You guys still working on that, or?
Yeah, probably by the end of next week, we'll have it all wrapped up for children and top tow right now. Want to get the top tow in on the, on the lawn, so we can maybe get some ivy seed in there, get some grass to grow this year before.
Sure.
I drove down it today about two o'clock, and it's looking really nice, the shoulders are a great improvement over when the citizens came and had some concerns about it, so good to see.
I'd make a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda as presented in the packet.
In support? A motion by Commissioner Mantala, support by Commissioner Stuzinski to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. Next up, under New Business, we have Introduction and Set Public Hearing on Proposed Ordinance Number 2021-621, the shipping storage containers.
Yes, Renee and Planning Commission has been working on this. As you can see, instead of reinventing the wheel, they just added some paragraphs to the existing ordinance. Do you want to go over any of the changes, Renee?
Changes are highlighted in red in your packet, and it's just basically defining what a shipping container is in the first section, under the definitions. And then in the second section, under the accessory uses and structures, we added three bullets, three, four, and five, that say where you can use shipping containers, where shipping containers are restricted. So basically, it's allowing them in the industrial district, restricting them in the commercial and residential districts. The Planning Commission is going to continue to look into whether or not we can figure out some way. out some way to incorporate into the code for larger lots or for places like on the bluff where they have larger backyards where maybe something like this could be utilized. Restricted covenants is in those areas, a lot of times they're going to restrict that, but we were going to continue to look into it, but we felt that the ordinance, the way that it was written, is sufficient to, to move forward. It will at least encourage, I get a lot of calls, not a lot, but two or three a month of people looking to potentially purchase a shipping container, so they're waiting to kind of know, you know, what the rules are going to be and what that's going to look like. The ones that currently exist, and we counted about six in town in the residential areas that we could find, there, I'm not saying there isn't more out there, but that's what we could find. Those would be allowed to remain, but it would be going forward that we would restrict those in the residential areas.
I've been reading through this, and maybe I missed it. Is it, if they're, can they be rented for short-term use? Like, let's say you're renovating your home.
Oh, yeah.
You want to put everything, you know, you want to move items out for.
Yep, as far as for a dumpster kind of feeling, you're thinking?
Yeah, not even a dumpster, just let's say, you know, you're gonna put in new flooring throughout your home, you're gonna put all your articles in there and keep it on your property instead of hauling it to, say, a rental unit. If I could have that put on my property for, you know.
A temporary time.
A temporary time until that work is done, and then it's moved in, out, and then the container's gone, you're literally renting the container.
Right, we didn't think of that idea, but that would be covered under a temporary structure permit.
Okay, okay, so.
So it could occur.
You could do that still.
Yeah, yeah, I hadn't thought of that, but that, that type of use would be covered under our temporary structure permits.
Okay.
Yes, it could be considered.
As long as that's still, because.
I've seen that advertised, storage pods or something.
Right, you use it, use it as such a thing, you know, you like, you gotta rip everything out of like.
Take them away and bring them back later when you're done.
Right, right.
Right.
The trick would be that it would have to be temporary.
Right, but I mean, let's say, you know, it's there for a month, or your entire house is getting new flooring or new drywall or something, you want to get everything cleared out of there so it's not in a construction zone.
Right.
You know, you move it into there, it's secured on your own property, it's easier, you know, you can just move it from your house to your yard essentially, instead of moving it across town to a commercial storage unit, and then you put it back in and they come and take the unit away.
Right. So with the introduction that we're looking for, the recommendation would be to set a public hearing for the planning, or for the city commission to hear any public comments. I talked with Kim, and the earliest we could get that in was October eleventh, you know, for the posting and everything to occur, so that's the recommendation.
I would make the motion that we set the public hearing for ten eleven twenty twenty-one meeting with publication in the action shopper on ten three to hear public input on the proposed changes.
Support.
I have a motion by myself and support by Commissioner Mantle to set a public hearing. Any other discussion?
One, one thing really quick, too, I just, just thought of, have you had any inquiries about shipping container homes? I know that's kind of a, it's kind of a new thing, recycling shipping containers into kind of modern homes, and they're actually kind of, they're upscale and kind of, not something I guess you'd normally see in Gladstone, that's maybe a little bit more California or something like that. I was just wondering if you had any inquiry into that, and if, if so, how would, because this is really talking about auxiliary buildings.
Right.
Not a primary building.
I have had those questions for like a tiny home concept, not for a full, full home or a traditional home, I guess I would call them. The tiny homes can't meet the code in some parts of the, our zoning districts. They often get held up with restricted covenants as also, and many of our restricted covenants require a certain, they will say, they'll have language like onsite build. So there's things like that that would hold that up. It hasn't been anything that anybody has questioned, so we didn't address that. We talked about it in our subcommittee, but being that we haven't had that request at this point, we, we just didn't address it at this time. The large requests have been for, you know, garages, chef, kind of thing.
Sure.
So yes, we talked about it, but no, the code doesn't fully restrict it, but it does restrict it in some areas, and restricted covenants is which the city does not enforce, but the, the subdivisions would, those, I don't think you could do it in those areas, in any of them. I haven't read every single one, but most of them are meant to keep the community looking very uniform and very structured.
Sure.
Again, not ours to enforce, but if they're there, we point them out and make sure that somebody's not investing in something that they may have to remove at some point.
Right, right, cool, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. Next up, we have the city assessor proposed employment agreement.
Just if you look at this, this is something we've been working on for a little while. The assessor historically was a full-time person and wasn't full-time doing assessing, they did office work or just worked for other departments. We did an experiment this year in the rec department. We tried running the rec department with just Jason, the director, and then his, Robert, his full-time employee, and it was hard. It was hard for Jason in the fact that, you know, doing a budget and having somebody to answer the phone and reserve the campground and rent the sports park, and it just didn't work out very well. He hired a, a part-time person that did a really good job, but she left and went back to school, and, and she's not coming back. She actually moved down to where she's going to school, and so he, he would have to start over from, from, you know, the first step in training somebody in another part-time person in order to, say, work during the winter hours when the sports park's going full blast. So that and the fact that in the city clerk evaluation, there's a number of things that the city clerk needs help on that are sort of missing or hitting a loophole and because of time constraints. So we got the idea, and we had Janice working for us, and she's sort of, she's really good at what she does, and she's good at a lot of other things. She's a good organizer, she's, she's a good IT person, she does, she's a jackball trades, and when you get somebody that's good like that, we thought now would be the time to, to look at hiring her and using her to assist Kim and also help the rec department in the office assistant job with the rec. Look in the packet, we have the, I have an employment agreement, which is, I took all the, all the legal terms and whatnot are, are the same as copied from the clerk's contract and the public safety director's contract. Then behind that, that has exhibit B, it has the job descrip, job description of the city assessor administrative assistant. I went through in, in this morning, and I did the math on, on costs. And that's a spreadsheet that I, I passed out right here at the meeting, and the, we're proposing a salary of forty-nine thousand, and the benefit cost will be around twenty-eight thousand, so the, the total expense will be seventy-seven thousand per year. Then I looked at the old expenses of when, the way we were operating before this year, with having, having the extra person in the rec department, and the assessor again was contracted employee, we've been paying her thirty-eight thousand, and the assistant rec director with benefits, and so that all came out to a hundred and thirty-five thousand, so the actual net savings over a year in the, in the first year will be fifty-eight thousand. This year, the twenty twenty-one expenses, as I showed you, the assessor contract was thirty-eight, and we had the Abby, the part-timer, that she worked the maximum amount she could, and I added some, some more time in here for another part-timer, which would get us through the winter months. So a, a part-time assistant at the rec costs about twenty-one thousand, and so the twenty twenty-one expenses are about fifty-nine thousand, which is more than the seventy-seven thousand, but we're, we need something to fill in the gaps. We're really, we're missing out. We had a lot of problems in the rec department with people not answering the phone and people trying to reserve the sports park for a wedding, and so our, our plan is to bring that part of the rec job to city hall, and Janice will be coordinating it, and we'll be running that through Patty and Rhonda in the office here with the, the slip rentals and the campground stuff and sports park stuff, so we'll take that off of, off of the rec department's plate. So with the, the net reduction in, in savings from the twenty twenty-one compared to the, the actual savings we're looking at was the, the expense is going to be about eighteen thousand dollars more than what it was this year with, with operating the rec department less one person. And this year, because we're at the midway point of our fiscal year, overall, the general fund, when I did the math, will be pretty close to breaking even. The staff report it shows we would have to do some budget amendments, but that's because some departments would be a little bit less and some would be a little bit more. She'll actually be paid less per hour for, for assessing work, and, and it'd be charging more to the rec department or to the clerk's budget, which they would have to amend the other way. So I put a list of reasons that I, I came up with, reasons to return the job to a full-time as rec part-time office assistant is not working with turnover and communications, and Jason is constantly playing catch-up, and I want him to really start concentrating more on the, the other part of administration of the rec department, like grant writing and stuff like that. City clerk would be supervisor, she'd be still working for you, and the city clerk would sort of be her liaison between the commission and act as her supervisor. And the other benefit would, Kim, Kim would be getting some assistance on some of the stuff she needs help with, because when you look at the rec job, it's sort of a, I don't know, if you want to call it a biseasonal job, it's really busy in the, in the late spring and summer, and then it dies off in the fall, and then you have the ski season, and it dies off in the spring, and then it starts over again, so there's actual months in there where she'll be able to work more with doing her assessor duties and helping with, with some administrative stuff at city hall. My third benefit was the assessor would be more readily available. There's, because she's only here part-time, there are days when people stop in to talk with her, and she's not here, and under normal circumstances, she'd be able to return a call or get back with her that day. The other benefit is we would, we wouldn't have, right now, we pay her at a higher, higher rate, at a premium rate for doing the tax tribunals for us, and that would be just included in her, in her job. The administrative assistant will work with office staff to make the harbor campground rentals, the sports park reservations, and financials more efficient and user-friendly. And the administrative assistant and office staff can assist in the hiring and registering of part-times. That is a, I wouldn't believe what a headache and how much work that is getting that many kids to work for the rec department.
Oh, yeah.
And now in today's world, to find those kids that want to work, and so, help there. And the last one I had on the list was, she is, also took the training, and she's registered election official, so she will be working the elections also. Closing, I put the full-time assessor, admin administrative assistant will help city staff fill in the gaps. We have been experiencing a customer smart support and administrative support at city hall and the recreation department. Do I have any questions?
That does come up every year in the, in, when we do Kim's review, that she's just overtaxed.
Yeah.
Because she's not truly just doing clerk work.
No.
She's doing human resources and a multitude of other things that we don't have specialists in.
And these, and these things, there's, with her being full-time, then it'll be enough time for her to do everything and be available, like Eric said, so it'll be, it'll be better for services. So just to clarify, you had mentioned about taking the reservations and some of that stuff from the rec department, so that'll be completely on her duties under the administrative assistant responsibilities, correct?
Yeah, it'll be, we'll be channeling everything through this office and city hall, and it, it was always uncomfortable because people would, would like get their bullet slip and then have to come up and go to the rec department, get their bullet slip, then come up here to pay.
Hey.
Now everything, it'll be one-stop shopping for everything, so.
Okay. So that's just going to be completely taken off the, like you said, off the plate?
And she has some very good ideas for a, a actual community calendar that everybody will be able to work off, and so you can go on and look and see for yourself when the sports park is available.
Sounds good.
That would be really nice to have them call if I notice it's available.
Right, you could just check. In, in the balancing of duties there, just under Article one, section, section one point two, the city, the city clerk will provide the day-to-day guidance and assigned job duties. Section one point two, the city is, the city clerk will provide the day-to-day guidance and assigned job duties. So she'll be working primarily under the clerk and assisting the rec department or other departments also? Kind of a?
Yeah, I would say ma- mainly the clerk and the rec.
Okay.
Be the two bigs. But she's, uh, she does help a lot of the other departments when we're like working on special assessments and, uh, you know, doing, needing a lot of information and stuff like that. Figuring out how to fix my bone.
I didn't see that written anywhere. I'm sure that's part of the job description.
Ultimately, her boss is, is the city commission.
Yeah.
That's right.
That's what it says right there, yeah.
Yeah, just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, we just thought it because you are also the clerk's boss and the clerk.
Right.
But, um, indicates right directly with you that that would be a good, because she'll be with her every day. And, uh, so she'll be able to help direct that.
So the assessor portion falls under the city commission.
Yeah.
Right, right, makes sense.
And so financially, you're in a nutshell, I guess, just to recap that. Right prior to the global hiccup of COVID, we were looking at, uh, you know, between a rec director and, and the assessor, we're looking at a hundred and thirty-five thousand a year. Right, and now we've scaled that back to seventy-seven. So, so really, we're looking at the savings of fifty-eight thousand annually.
Yeah.
Once we get into a regular year under this agreement.
Yeah.
The COVID hiccup and the Band-Aids and how we limped through that, so.
I just wanted to show that we did try this year, but it was, uh, it didn't work out very well. It was also hard for Jason, his first year, to get all that stuff done at one time, too.
And then try to train people that haven't had any experience.
Robert's first year of working also, and then has a whole batch of the kids, so.
Yep, so we accomplished all the same tasks at fifty-eight thousand dollars less a year. I'd say that's, that's a pretty good, uh, that's a pretty good plan. Uh, I did have one question on, uh, on the contractor, section, section nine point five. I think it's maybe just a typo or an omission on the merger clause. That last sentence of the merger clause, no other representations, discussions, or agreements shall be effective. Supplement or contradict this agreement. All such agreements are in writing and signed by the city and the city clerk. Should that be like city manager or where it says city in general?
That should probably say the mayor.
Mayor Thompson.
The mayor and the city clerk. Really concentrating on making sure I didn't mix up the his and the hers.
That's right. How dare you call her his.
I only missed the one and Rhonda got it.
I think this is a good, this looks pretty good. And then if it's providing some benefits to the citizens with better services, smoother services, um, and, you know, keeping the assessor around in that position, also, that's a benefit.
Yeah, keeping the assessor in Gladstone.
Well, no, well, yeah, yeah, that too, yeah. But, but I mean, available, um, like was mentioned, that's always, that's always nice when people have questions. It seems like a good, uh, a, a good agreement on both sides. So, uh, I would make a motion to approve the city assessor administrative assistant employment agreement with the change mentioned by Commissioner Strzazinski.
I'll support that.
The motion by Commissioner Mantle is support by Commissioner Aqua to approve the assessor agreement. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion is carried.
Welcome, welcome, welcome.
Next up, we have the DDA appointment, Ms. Trisha, Ms. Trish Kidd.
Ron, do you wanna talk about Ms. Kidd?
Sure, uh, Trish. Sorry about that. Uh, Trish Kidd and her partner took over the old fast tax office, which is at the end of Delta Avenue. Uh, they wanna do basic, uh, bookkeeping, accounting, and tax work, which I think is something that, uh, the city could really, could really use. Uh, when I talked to her, we, I, I set her up with a couple of things. And then she mentioned to me that she was very interested in getting involved with activities within the city. So I talked to her about, uh, the DDA board. We did have a vacancy. Uh, and I, I passed along things like our, our bylaws, some of the, the latest minutes, and discussed some of the current projects that we were working on. Uh, she filled out the application. And, uh, we went to the DDA board at the last meeting where it was unanimously approved. Uh, talked to Trish and she is very excited about joining the DDA board. She would be, she is a business owner and she is replacing another business owner on the DDA board.
Right, there's, there's certain number of seats you have on there for different designations, citizens, business owners.
Residents within the DDA district, exactly.
So this fits into all those guidelines.
Yes, it does.
Okay.
She's also president of the Delta County Animal Shelter. Just gonna, just gonna mention that, yeah. Looks like a good candidate. She's excited to participate with the DDA. I'm excited to make a motion to appoint, uh, she go by, she goes by Trish?
She goes by Trish, yes.
Goes by Trish, so, yep. I make a motion to appoint, uh, Trish Kidd to the Gladstone DDA, term expiring May first of twenty-twenty-four.
I'll support the motion by Commissioner Strzazinski, support by myself to appoint Ms. Trisha Kidd to Gladstone DDA. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion is carried.
Thank you.
Next up, we have, thanks, Ron. Next up, we have appoint election workers for the November second, twenty-twenty-one election.
Yes, this is, uh, the normal, uh, thing that Kim sets up that we're required to appoint the election workers prior to the upcoming election.
I would make a motion that we authorize city clerk Kim Berry to appoint the necessary election inspectors for the November second, twenty-twenty-one election.
Support.
We have a motion by myself, support by Commissioner Mantle. All those in favor?
Aye.
Comment, just that it's nice to see seventeen people that are willing to come forward and help with the elections.
Yeah, ever since I got, became an election worker, I've been so impressed with these people that work on this.
They're very dedicated.
It runs very smooth.
Yeah, and dedicated to the accuracy, at least in our town, to making sure every bullet gets gone.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we have the special joint meeting to discuss the North Shore.
Yep, uh, we have been working with, um, with the DDA. And, uh, you remember, we have, uh, an agreement with, uh, Paul, the Paul Copple group on, uh, on that property. And, uh, the, um, the clock is running out in December. That, uh, the availability to purchase will, uh, will, will run out. And so we thought it'd be a good time to have the DDA and the city commission get together, go over all the stuff we have and come up and make some, some decisions. You have anything else you wanted to add, Renee?
No, just that, um, we need to get the two groups together to, to talk about what the options are and, um, you know, what, what kind of things we wanna do to, to move forward or if we want to move forward or not move forward.
Is there a problem with publication of this joint meeting, timely-wise, if it's September thirtieth?
No, um, I talked with Kim and she can get everything posted. We just need an eighteen-hour notice.
Oh, okay.
So, um, it would, yeah, and it would be open to the public. But, um, we're looking at scheduling that for September thirtieth at five P.M. And that was just a suggestion based on, um, the folks that we had talked to as being available, you know, at that time.
Is everybody available? Anybody not available?
I'll be, I'll be out of town that day, I'm coming back that day, so it'll be close.
Close, okay.
It'll be close.
I'm, I'll be, I'd be available.
Same here.
And because the, the county posted a state of emergency, um, with the COVID, we could potentially zoom that meeting also. So if Robert is still quarant- you know, on quarantine, we could, we could potentially zoom him in if that is something he would want to do or.
And we've done that before, I remember when, um, when the other commissioners.
We have the capability to do it, so. And with, with the governor, or not the governor, I'm sorry, with the health department declaring that state of, that Delta County is a state of emergency, we're, we're allowed to do it by law. Um, I would encourage as many people to get there in person as possible. That would be ideal. But in the event that we needed to, we could, we could also do that.
Would you mind contacting him then and finding out?
Oh, sure.
I would make the motion that we set the special meeting for September thirtieth at five P.M.
Support.
Now, if you're here at City Hall?
Yes.
Yep, okay. Any other discussion? I don't think there's really much to discuss yet, but all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion is carried. Next up, we have the city managers' report.
Oh, yeah, sorry. The informational meeting.
Patty and Adam and I are looking at, uh, um, the possibility of replacing some of the, um, replacing the cameras in City Hall. They're, they're getting quite outdated and a couple of them don't work. And Paul Guyer installed this system and said that it's not worth, um, trying to fix. These cameras are sort of, uh, are considered disposable now. And the camera systems, instead of having the DVR, it goes right to the web. And so we'd be able to look at the cameras from our phone if we ever needed to. So, um, we're, we're looking into that. Uh, Adam's got some prices and I was working on the RAP grant. We'll pay, we'll, we'll pay half and we're, um, probably gonna use Mary Creighton's, uh, improvements to the community money for, uh, for the other half if we decide to go with that money. I attended the nine fourteen planning commission meeting. And I attended the nine sixteen DDA meeting. Spent a little bit of time working on the assist, assessor administrative assistant contract and all the information, those with it. Rodney and I met with Valerie White, who is the Eagle representative that handles all of the SRF loans. She's, uh, um, SRF guru, she has been for almost thirty years. Very knowledgeable person. And we went over, uh, different scenarios, timetables, schedules, um. It's a big question mark right now because it, for us especially, is because we don't have a choice of many contractors up here as compared to the big city areas. And the other big question is materials. Will the contractor be able to get the materials? And, and, uh, Valerie said, the other, you can compound that problem in that they didn't do any last year and all the ones from last year are getting dumped in this year also. And so there is a lot of construction that's gonna be happening in the, to wastewater and water plants in the state of Michigan. But hopefully, there'll be the people to do it and the, and the parts to put in the, the pumps and, uh, different processes that are required to do it. So she said this state's sort of just looking at, seeing how the, the first few go. And then, uh, it might be passing people down to the next year, to the next year. We're gonna just have to see how, when we're gonna have full work crews and, uh, the supply chain gets back in order. But we are working on that, so. Met with the DDA finance committee and the mayor regarding the North Shore. Met with Steve Mann on North Shore and a couple other legal issues. Met with Scott from Coleman Engineering. And he came down and grabbed several, um, gravel samples, sending it to an independent, a different lab than what, uh, what we sent samples to. And he went over the whole project. And he'll be, um, sending a report, carrying a report on, uh, his assessment of North fifteen. And also, uh, Barry did the same thing with, uh, with Tom Ritter from Pan and Dolan. And he'll be also doing the same thing. And last but not least, they attended the Q-Bad quarterly meeting, um, last week. And there's, like everybody else, there's a whole bunch of ARPA. There seems to be unlimited supply of ARPA meetings, but they're not passing any of the ARPA money out. Yeah, so that's all I had.
Thanks, Eric. Uh, city commission and committee reports, any? Board or commission reports, the DDA informational meeting number one?
Good evening. On behalf of the Gladstone DDA board, I'm happy to present the first informational meeting of the Gladstone Downtown Development Authority for twenty-twenty-one. The report and this presentation will be available to the public, both on the city website and with hard copies available at City Hall. By the way, if you haven't received one, we have some hard copies here today. And after the meeting, I'll make sure that they're available, uh, out front at this, the front desk. Much of this slide has been discussed in prior informational meetings, but I wanna reaffirm them here since this is a public meeting open to the taxing jurisdictions and the public who may not be aware of the background information. The DDA was established in nineteen ninety-two with a mission to enhance the quality of life for the city of Gladstone residents and develop a positive image of downtown Gladstone for businesses, residents, and visitors. Public Act fifty-seven requires that two informational meetings to be held every year to inform the public and the taxing jurisdictions of our work. These meetings can be held in conjunction with other public meetings. So we are presenting this at tonight's regularly scheduled city commission, public meeting. And the next meeting will be held later this year at a different public meeting. We try to do it one in the evening, maybe one in the morning, because sometimes it works out better. People can't get to one or the, the other. Now, regular board meetings, uh, are normally held, uh, every month. But in the era of COVID-nineteen, several meetings were held in a virtual format from January through March of this year. In April, meetings were shifted to City Hall in conjunction with mask requirements, social distancing, and COVID questionnaires kept on file at City Hall. With the uncertainty of the COVID variants, we are hopeful that we can continue in-person meetings, but we must remain flexible in our outlook to future board meetings. With the uncertainty of the COVID variants, we are hopeful that we can continue in-person meetings, but we must remain flexible in our outlook to future board meetings. Last year, the DDA changed the old-fashioned Christmas format to a drive-by event on Delta Avenue. This was, uh, really driven by COVID nineteen. Uh, you know, in past, when we did old-fashioned Christmas, we had the kids with face paintings sitting on Santa's lap. Obviously, last year was not the, the time to have that kind of a, an interaction. We were out there, and this was really a very successful event, and you can see the cars were lined up on Delta Avenue to see Santa. It was really pretty exciting that evening to, to see him all, you look down Delta Avenue, and for blocks, you could see the, the headlights, uh, coming, coming our way. The DDA Board and the Christmas Coordinator handed out Saclay's chocolates and maps to the home decorating contest entrance. Uh, the DDA would really like to thank Public Safety for assisting with traffic control and having the city fire truck available on site. The DDA reinstituted the home decorating contest last year, and the entrance grew in size. Prizes were awarded to the top six awardees, and the top twenty homes received a fifty-dollar rebate on their electric bill, courtesy of W P P I. The winner shown on this slide was Ms. Sarah Harris at thirteen oh five Superior. Really quite a great display. You know, we had an awful lot of comments from, uh, from people who said this year, you know, Gladstone was really lit up. It really looked good, and we're working, we already had two old-fashioned Christmas committee meetings so far this year, so we're getting into it, and we're really, really hoping that we're gonna have even more, uh, entrance into the contest for, uh, this coming year. Now, early this year, the DDA Board was approached by the Department of Public Works to request assistance for the long-planned and hoped-for North Fifteenth Street project. Since part of the project is within the DDA district, the Board favorably acted after receiving legal opinion that the request is consistent with our DDA plan and a legitimate expenditure. The Board approved two-year funding for the project, consistent with the DDA footprint in the project area. Now, the DDA has continued to support the facade program as a way to improve business locations that are very visible to the public. Restaurants were one of the hardest hit during COVID nineteen, and the DDA Board received a request for the proposed outdoor dining area at the Dew Drop Family Restaurant. After approval, you can see the start of the project, uh, on the right, and then on the left is the final result. Uh, this is really a nice, relaxed, and comfortable dining venue for downtown. As a matter of fact, talking with the, uh, the Dew Drop folks, there was actually, I think it was about three weekends ago, there was sort of a, a family party that was held out there in the, in the patio. So, that, that is really done in a, in a first-class manner. In July, a ribbon cutting was held at the New North Bluff Discourse. This location was formerly a solid waste site, and the city worked hard to make this happen. Now, although this is not in the DDA district, I wanna highlight this achievement, since these locations bring a great deal of revenue into the city, much in the downtown district. In the picture, you can see city manager Eric Buckman cutting the ribbon, with Mayor Joe and Commissioner Rob in attendance at the event. You know, the day after the ribbon cutting, there was actually a disc golf tournament was held at the location, and brought in many participants from outside the area. These are people who end up traveling to Gladstone, and ultimately dine in our restaurants, stop for ice cream, fuel their vehicle, and many need overnight local lodging. Like the Mish Waterfront Marathon and the Fourth of July festivities, all of this has a positive economic impact in Gladstone, much of it in the downtown area. One of our downtown businesses, the D and D Dog Dynamics Training Center, uh, assisted in a full-day police canine training session for Michigan and Wisconsin public safety departments. Uh, D and D hosted a luncheon for the police canines, and catered the event from various Gladstone eateries. Gladstone's own canine, Cam, was part of the program, and Public Safety Officer Ryan Peterson is shown in the middle photo at the, the top left. This event can bring ongoing significant public safety participants into Gladstone for future training programs. So, it was a, really a, a very success, successful and exciting event. This year, the Gladstone Farmers Market opened our season on May third. The market committee revised the application and policy documents. We got them out to the potential, uh, vendors prior to the season. On the right, you can see Gladstone resident Danny Stockham making the first purchase of the season, a wonderful loaf of banana bread. We have instituted a market manager table, shown on the lower left, to handle SNAP and senior bucks transactions, which we are now doing, and we look forward to actually, uh, trying to market that even more so in the, in the future. Thanks to W P P I for all of the assistance that they have given us. This year, we have some really nice cloth market bags that are available to shoppers, thanks to W P P I. Uh, we, uh, there's tons of these boxes, which are actually stored, uh, next door, and it seems like every Monday that I'm out there at the market, the manager's saying, "Ron, go back and get some more boxes," because they're really a popular thing. They're, they're good-looking, and, uh, it's nice to see a, some advertising for the Gladstone Farmers Market. So, so that's, that's really pretty interesting. Now, a new business, Auto Masters, opened shop on Ninth and Fourth Avenue. They offer a wide range of services, and I am sure that you've heard, uh, a number of their ads that are on the radio, where they're thanking the community for our support in making them successful. They just opened up, and they are really doing, doing quite well, so that's, that's exciting. Another business on Delta has sold, and this was the former accounting practice, which is just down the road on Thirteenth Street and Delta. This location is gonna become a senior daycare facility, and we welcome them to Gladstone. So, I wanna thank you very much, and if you do have any questions, I would be happy to address them.
Thanks, Ron. Okay, questions? Jump right into Commissioner comments.
Sure, well, sure, absolutely. Uh, yeah, thanks, Ron. Great presentation. It, uh, always good to see what the DDA is bringing to the community. That's kinda where I got started, my community involvement here, and, uh, it, uh, they've, they've done some amazing things, you know, downtown Delta Avenue's certainly grown in, in the time I've been in town. And, uh, I appreciate their efforts. There's a lot of volunteers, volunteer a lot of time there. They're not, uh, you know, it's not a paid position. It's, uh, people just giving back to the community. We appreciate the efforts of all of them. Also, I'd like to thank those who came in for public comment. We always appreciate, uh, getting some feedback, both positive and negative, or concerning, or people's frustrations, frustrations, or challenges that they face that we're not aware of. We can't, can't help address them if we're not aware of them. The comments Phil has had regarding Bayview, I find quite concerning, to be honest with you. I, uh, have a special-needs son, so I can really relate to her situation, her concern about him. I think we need to, I think we need to follow up on that. I don't know how much authority we have to, to make sure that gets rectified, but even on a personal level, I plan to, uh, follow through on that and see, see what we can do to make sure that those, those concerns get addressed. And beyond that, oh, and congrats, Janice. Uh, you've been a part of the city for a couple of years as a, as a contract employee, but welcome aboard as a full-time employee. That's all I have.
Mr. Mantle?
I'd like to also thank, uh, Ron for the presentation tonight. We always look forward to that information. You know, people always ask, what does the DDA do? Um, another thing I'd like to mention in there, um, you touched on a little bit with the Fifth, the Fifteenth Street project. Um, all the assistance that the DDA can do within its legal means to help keep, uh, special assessments down and help fund projects in the DDA zone that really do enhance, uh, the bikeability, walkability, uh, and just overall appearance that attracts the businesses to town, stay in town, and then makes the, I just had, um, family in from, uh, out of state down in Texas, and they were here, and I brought them down. We came and ate last night downtown and did some shopping, and, um, they were really impressed. Um, they're like, wow, this is, this is really, really ni, neat, clean, you know, they're, they just didn't think, you know, they think small town is gonna be, you know, you know, two right road or something. They're from Texas, so they, they know what it is, but they were really impressed by our small town and how, uh, presentable it was, and, um, all the great restaurants we had. We ate at two of the restaurants in town this weekend, and, uh, they were fantastic. So, um, it's great to see that the DDA keeps up that support and, uh, allows our businesses, lays that foundation for our businesses to succeed here. So, um, I'd also like to just make a comment about the, um, the, the folks that mentioned the Housing Commission. Sometimes there's, there's, there's confusion. It's called the Gladstone Housing Commission, but it's actually a separate business entity that operates as a business within the city of Gladstone, being a governmental housing, um, development. It's, it's kind of a mix of public and private, and so, um, the city manager did mention that the power there is with that Housing Commission Board, and I would encourage those citizens, is thanking them to bring those, those issues to our attention, but also go to that, how, those Housing Commission Board meetings, and that's really where the, the people that we appoint have the power to affect change there with their policies, and the people in charge, and how action is taken there. So, thank you for bringing us that attention. I continued, uh, their support in following up on that, of course. And, uh, other than that, that's, uh, all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Rockwell?
Thank you, Ron. Uh, thank you, Barry, for having the patience and fortitude for doing your job, and welcome. That's about all I had. Everybody else seems to be saying exactly what I would be saying, so have a good night.
Thank you. Thanks, Ron. It was a great presentation. Really enjoyed it. Um, welcome aboard, Janice. And thanks, Barry, for, I know, I know there's been a lot of discussion. Greg and I spent, I don't know, two, three hours standing down there on Fifteenth Street, and it, it looks like it's coming along good.
Nice.
Yep.
And the striping also on Ninth Street. It's nice.
Yeah, it does. And, and, and the ci, city as a whole looks great. I, I do a lot of walking, an hour a day, so I, I spend a lot of time out there, and you really see stuff when you're walking compared to when you're driving by, and I have walked by Mr. View's spot, even this weekend, looking for him. Because I, I saw the emails. Yeah, not outside, though.
That's true.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks.
But, uh, yeah, get out and enjoy the beautiful weather. Won't be long, and we'll be wearing snowshoes, so.
Yay. I'm a winter fan.
Yeah, me too. That's all, that's all I've got. Uh, city clerk comments? None? Uh, the meeting's adjourned.
I got the, the police report on that fire.